Yeah, he's not gonna make it here tonight.
We have some meeting minutes to approve from our regularly scheduled council meeting and it's our June eighth, two thousand fifteen. There was many additions or corrections. Looking for motion to have both approved?
I make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Steph. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Gina. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carry unanimously. Agenda this evening? We have a lot of...
I'm sure up from my...
Agenda this evening. Todd, were you on the agenda?
No, I wasn't. I was just gonna follow up from when, when we were out, when we met.
Okay, so we will put you on the agenda then. Why don't we add Todd right after the Piers Rural Fire Protection Association contract?
Well, thirty-eight things on the agenda. He's thirty-nine.
Uh, yeah, no, well, we got building permits in there too.
Thirty-seven.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
I'll make the motion. I'll accept the additions.
Motion on the floor by Donnie to approve the agenda?
I second.
Second by Steph. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carry unanimously. Uh, Scotty, we got our, uh, Piers Rural Area Southern Water District well construction permit ordinance.
Yes, so we did discuss at a meeting prior to this in regards to having a, when the gentleman came here with the help wellhead protection. Suggested that we have something in our ordinance. I've been working with Bob Gruber with North Bay Southern Water District. And they have this ordinance in place with their, with their district. So, from my understanding, if there's any issue with someone wanting a permit to dig well or anything like that.
Would go through them.
It has to go through them, correct? And they have an ordinance in place. I guess this is just more so bringing it to our attention and reassuring that it is in place with RIPSAA.
Okay, so how does, how does that work then? We have, I mean, there's wells on private property and just, so I understand that it's all... We adopted ordinance, the same ordinance that they have adopted? Is that kind of what you're saying?
No, as far as I understand, they have an ordinance in place and we can pass the individual that's looking for a permit onto RIPSAA. And they have something in place. I guess the main concern was when...
Yeah, well, and the city was gonna have a portion in this as far as what, following up on some of these to make sure that there wasn't abandoned wells or open well casings, that sort of thing. What's the city's responsibility in that, do you know?
I have that information. I guess I'm not sure. The best would be to set up some kind of formal meeting with...
Are we talking two different things here? You're talking about if somebody wants to come in and put a well on their property, so they want to put in a new well. We're not talking about the existing wells that are there.
Okay.
This is something, if somebody comes and builds a house and they want to come in, they want to use a well instead of RIPSAA or in addition to RIPSAA or their...
They want to use a well for watering their yard or...
Or whatever they want to use it for. So this is a separate thing where they want to dig a well.
Okay, so this doesn't tie into that wellhead protection?
No, that's a different thing.
Wellhead protection plan.
Correct, but part of that plan was more so to prevent...
Right, contaminated things. Well, that, that would have been one of the...
Well, and continued...
Who does that responsibility go back to then? Does it go back, if we adopt this ordinance or...
This is just saying that RIPSAA gets to decide whether or not they can put the well in, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
How far is that?
We don't get the authority.
So it's not part of their wellhead protection plans or speak or whatever, however that...
Well, it sort of ties into it.
If you read that, nobody will probably get a well, correct? They'll make it so, they'll make it so a well will be illegal or will be not obtainable.
And, and there's a different part, that's part of the wellhead protection. The other part of the wellhead protection is to go, those existing wellheads to have it, to get it sealed off properly and that kind of thing. And that's a separate part, separate ordinance, separate thing than this particular thing, right?
So what do you guys, uh...
Well, I guess the main reason me, of me bringing this to the board was just to... It was a question at one point whether or not there was an ordinance in place for individuals, residents putting in a well. There is something with RIPSAA's ordinance that makes them apply for a permit to start that process.
And I think it's important that there is something in place.
Correct, so that's why...
So people are arbitrarily digging wells and then we have worry about contamination issues.
So that's why I brought that sort. There is something that goes through RIPSAA. As far as the wellhead contamination process, I think that's gonna be more of a process rather than, I mean, there's gonna be steps involved with that.
If people are using their well, I don't think they can force them not to stop. But if it's been sitting there and they're not using it, they can probably take steps to make them seal it off.
Correct, that's the way I would assume too.
And is this a contract we have with RIPSAA or we have adopted this?
If you read with the ordinance itself, no, we're not adopting, we're just stating that we don't have anything in our ordinance, so when residents come forward, they have the water district.
But we have, we have a contract or an agreement or something with RIPSAA so that...
Correct, we don't have anything in our ordinance that prevents people from digging well. They have to go through RIPSAA first, through the permitting process and things like that before they can do that. So there is something in place, so residents can't just dig a well, so to say.
Well, I mean, you do have in here that, you know, based on this thing, they would, you know, issue a permit. The district shall issue a permit unless it finds a bag that shows that health, safety, and welfare of the public. Required, uh, and so you still could, you know, well, long watering and things like that.
Yes, but there's just permission in place.
Of course, yeah, sure.
Just like the building permits.
Okay.
So I guess I'm not looking for a motion or anything. That's just more of an informative statement on the agenda.
Okay, let's take a little look at this, uh... Uh, when does the district need to need this back, Scott?
This is already in place in their ordinance.
This is already in place in their own ordinance.
Correct, this is just being a, those questions at that meeting, this is to show us as a council and the community that there is something...
So we really don't need to take action on this anyway?
Correct.
Oh, I gotcha.
So if there's something that comes up, if someone needs a well or wants a well, we can send them directly to RIPSAA.
Okay, yeah, I gotcha.
For the, we can...
Yeah, I thought it was already, we had to adopt as well.
And at first I thought it was true when we were at that meeting, but they have something in place already, which...
Okay, I gotcha. Uh, next item then is our feasibility steady for future street projects or cost estimates. Bubba, did you wanna kind of talk to the council about that a little bit? Was, uh, the public had a normal school in order?
Sure. We met with SEH, Scott, Sarah, myself, and Scott from SEH met last Thursday. We just kind of went through some of the scope of the projects and what we're looking at on Peter Avenue, Edward Street, and Centennial Drive. And Scott just gave us some different ideas as far as what these projects could be. We just had met last Thursday, so we would like to just wait until the July thirteenth.
Yeah, he's not gonna be able to put all that stuff together. We're not sure of time.
Right, so we were just thinking, wait until then. I did actually meet with Tri-City and got some ideas from them last week as well, so.
Okay, good.
We got some kind of ballpark numbers coming in from them, so.
Alright, so we're kind of looking at which projects and Scott, just so the public's aware of what we're looking at.
Uh, Peter Avenue, Edward Street, and Centennial Drive.
Edward Street, can it solve?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be Edward South from Park Avenue to Fourth Avenue, it's all good. And then, uh, yeah, I don't know if the new council members have a copy of the cap improvement plan. I mean, that might be a good thing to...
Does that, with those binders that Anna put together, they didn't get proper for capitals?
From twenty-ten, we can see if we got an extra copy.
Copy, be good to have.
Okay, thanks, Bubba.
Uh, we have the Piers Lions spray permit for October Fest. We have to approve. We will need a motion to have that approved. What is the actual October Fest date?
August thirtieth. I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie. Do we get a second?
Well, did that get sent to the state?
This is approval for it to get sent to the state.
Okay, and I'll second that.
And please, Stephanie, second by Stephanie.
I get your approval, I pay care.
All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carry unanimously. Uh, we've been working diligently over the last several months with our new contract with the Piers Rural Area Fire Protection Association, uh, PrEP, which is kind of referred to as the city of Piers and all its surrounding townships, uh, with several of the cities within those townships. We felt that our contract was, uh, needed to be updated. It was quite, I don't even remember the last time I looked at it, two thousand two or five. I don't remember the actual date. But, uh, the fire committee, um, has been working with, um, the townships to draft contracts and send them to the counties, redraft things. We're getting real close, um, to having what we feel is a final draft. Uh, is that on here, Scott?
Yes.
Okay, did you guys have any questions about that that I could maybe answer for you? Try and answer for you.
We're gonna have this agreement go for twenty years?
Yep.
Okay.
We're gonna have to call five again.
There you go.
Yeah, it's, it's a longer term agreement.
I guess just the update, everyone as well. So it started with the PrEP board, with, with the fire committee and the PrEP board. From there it moved down to Ronnie and I making some changes, sent to lead Minnesota State's attorney, sent to our attorney, back and forth between attorneys a couple times. And I guess after everything is complete, working with Ronnie and myself and our senior attorney, this is...
For right now?
Correct, this is where, this is the final draft. Everything should be in place unless there's any concerns amongst the council, that everything is finalized at this point.
If you guys didn't have a good chance to look at it, not like this has to be approved at this meeting. Um, obviously, we want to see it approved sometime in the, in the short term. But, um, if you want to take more time and read through it, um, not a problem. Just make sure you guys are comfortable with everything in it.
I agree with him.
Um, Scott, are we gonna have, have to adapt this to be a resolution?
I guess I haven't done something in this. I would say if I have the minutes, it's a resolution.
Okay.
But I guess I would request that we do a motion in a second. If I needed a resolution, I'll read this at the next meeting on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Steph.
I was just gonna make a motion. We go ahead. If you're ready for a motion. If you're not, I won't make a motion.
No, absolutely. It's wide open. If you guys want to make a motion to have it approved, uh...
I guess I'd have a chance to look at it and I'm okay with it. I made a motion. We go ahead and approve the contract with Rural Fire Protection.
Motion on the floor from Stephanie. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gina. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carry unanimously. Like to thank everybody who was involved with that. There's a lot of manovers went into that and, uh, like to thank everybody who, uh, who was able to help all of that, so. I guess with that, we'll talk to Mr. President.
Alrighty.
Hey, Todd.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
I don't know how much you talked to him about going, when we went over there and looked at the, Eddie's there and there's, uh, what you guys are thinking with that, if you want to keep looking into it or...
Um, I did have a chance to go, but we just walked through the building with Todd. The building's actually, all in all, is, is in pretty decent shape better, better than I guess I remember it the last, the last time I was in there. I think it, what really needs to, the council needs to figure out is this something we want to own or not? And, uh, we did get a chance to, uh, the food shelf, uh, board did get a chance to meet and talk about it. They don't feel that they need another building or want one at this point. So would be, you know, if the city is interested in the property, you know, I mean, we buy it, we try to get a business in, a commercial business of some sort? Or would we buy it and try and, you know, extend the park? I guess that's the question that, you know, me as a council need to decide is do we want the water or don't we want the lot? And, um, I guess that's, that's where it's at right now. And then if we would be willing to buy the lot, what would we be willing to pay for it? So, um, I, I guess those are the first things that, uh, we need to ask ourselves and come up with an answer for Todd and whoever's involved with that project. Is this something that we want to pursue or is this something we really don't want to pursue?
Well, if, you know, if we are looking at extending the park, I think it's a great idea. Um, you know, I guess I'd be, if that's what we think we need to do over there. If we're not looking at extending the park, I guess I don't know that the city should be involved in buying a lot just to then turn around and resell it, you know? So that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Um, I, so I guess we'd have to decide as a council if we need to make Billy Park bigger at this point or if we're content with the way things are, I guess. I don't know. Because you guys keep telling me we can't undo the park or Mike says you can't change the park to the fire department and whatever, so I...
Yeah, I, I, I don't know.
But, you know, so I mean, if we are, if we don't have a use, if we're not gonna expand the park, then I guess, do we have another use for it as the city? I don't know. But, um, just to buy it and then resell it to a business, I don't think that's what we're here for, so.
Yeah, I tend to agree.
Yeah, uh, I've got mixed feelings about it. Um, you know, and me personally, uh, I don't see a big need to expand the park. And, and I guess I probably think it's just the opposite of what you guys are thinking. Um, if, if it, if it were me and I was king for a day, um, to buy the lot and then try and lure a business to take it, uh, to buy it at a reduced rate or whatever, um, that would be more my interest personally, um, rather than expanding, uh, the park. Thing is, right now, Billy Park doesn't get a lot of use. Um, you know, there's, there's not a lot of people that use it, but if we made it bigger, maybe they would.
Yeah, I think, I think part of the reason that park doesn't get used is there's really no playground equipment in there either. I mean, there's, I mean, I don't know if that was the soul, if they ever intended on putting stuff like that over there or not. I think if you put playground equipment over there, I think you're gonna have more use in the park, but that's...
Yeah, and you could be, you could very well be right, Todd. I mean, that's, um, you know, what it's gonna take to draw more people to that park, I guess, you know, may be a good start. So, yeah, I guess, I guess it's, uh, you know, it's something we have to decide what we want to do with it. You know, whether, uh, we want to buy it and, uh, I guess that's the first thing we ought to come up with. If we don't want it, I don't want to keep wasting Todd's time and the family's time and things of that nature. If we do decide we want it, let's sit down and start to deal on it. You know, is it a top, is that lot or that piece of property my top priority personally? No. Doesn't mean it's, it's nothing that the city could use or utilize as well, you know, so. What do you think, Gina?
I mean, it was a good point. It's something we have to think about and maybe not decide today for sure.
Yeah, I mean, um, I think, yeah, I think the biggest thing is just deciding whether, whether there's a need for it or not. Like I said, I don't want to keep Todd, um, you know, hanging around coming to council meetings. If it's something we have no intention of doing either, you know. I think we need to, uh, collectively as a group at some point in time, um, you know, decide whether it's something we want to pursue or we don't want to pursue. I guess, I personally have mixed feelings. So it's not my top priority, but I'm not saying that it could be utilized, so. There are definitely some possibilities there. There's, uh, you know, a lot on Main Street, so, you know, there's a possibility that things the city could do with the lot too.
I'm sure it wasn't in your scope.
Yeah, yeah, it just didn't, wasn't in the, yeah, it was kind of one of those things that kind of just comes up, but, you know, that stuff happens. It's not good. Yeah.
It needs to be commercialized or...
It's commercial residential.
Could be either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is something we want to try and table till the next meeting, which is two weeks from now? And I think...
Three weeks.
Three weeks, I'm sorry. And I think, um, if Todd doesn't have it sold by then or have a serious buyer by then, I think we all need to think about this, whether or not this is something we definitely should or definitely shouldn't do. I think everybody's kind of a, a little jittery about it the way it looks because we don't have a, maybe a clear cut intended use for the property. So, you know, maybe put your thinking caps on it and, uh...
I mean, I think you gotta really look at, like, you guys know what the fire hall looks like. And, I mean, that thing's packed full. You're able to expand the fire hall, you know?
Yeah.
There's, you're gonna invade into, onto the park space anyway, but, I mean, you can, you know, I guess I don't, never heard anything about not being able to explain what it's...
Mike said that to take a park back out of being a park is a very difficult process, so.
But you have a food shelf on that park too.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, you have different things on, on it.
No, and I, I think that's something everybody needs to think about is, you know, what, what is our future gonna be for the, for the fire department? And, uh, you know, um, what we have as a base, you're right, you know, it's, um...
It's full in there.
Yeah.
Plenty full in there.
Yeah, so, and, uh, so, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of equipment, a lot of trucks, a lot of personnel, so. Yeah, so, but, you know, and, and I think that's maybe something, Scott, we need to contact the league about, uh, before the next meeting.
You want to take some...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, swap, swap land parcels, you know, take away from this side and add to this side, you know, if that's a possibility. I, I don't know, maybe it's not, but I think until we get clear cut legal advice on what we can and can't do, you know, we'll kind of spin our wheels too, so. Be nice to know what our options truly are.
If it is that hard, like Mike was saying.
Yeah, then, then it wouldn't, yeah. Because then we'd have to skip a lot and do a substation. Our tunnel under.
Okay, so...
We will, we'll definitely have something by the next meeting for you, Todd, so hang tight. Thanks for...
Alright.
Yep. Uh, building permits, it was supposed to be something.
I, I looked before and I didn't see any. I pretended there was for a side job, but that doesn't look, nothing's up, so.
Okay, um, kind of happy with the mono boat construction we got going on top of here. It's actually been, it's actually been all in all.
Yeah.
Most of all, so, thank you guys on planning it, Billy. I know you've been putting in a lot of extra time, um, trying to deal with, uh, whatever comes up there, so. Really appreciated. Uh, we have some department reports. Uh, Bobby O'Trembo, what do we got on public works, Bubba?
Just wanted to update the council and the city on the mosquito spraying. So we have sprayed four times. Um, generally this spring it's been once a week.
I, I, I was up giving a drink of water last night. I was, I hear this... Ooh, coming out of the street.
Mosquito.
Response with the juicer.
But, uh, so it's been once a week and sometimes twice a week, I guess, starting now, but, um, just to let people know it is posted on the website. Twenty-four hours in advance, legally we have to do that. And then Carrie's been posting it on Facebook, the city Facebook page. So that's the source of information for that. And, uh, also when we met with Scott Hedlund from SEH, we talked about the Third Avenue North project. The county's looking at doing a mill in Overland twenty nineteen.
Yep.
The Water and Sewer District has water issues there. They've got real shallow water means. So we had talked with SEH about the possibility, our master trail plan is going along that area. So that's a possibility at that time if there's...
Really think, uh, can a, a route going in and out from there or just, uh, like a two-way in or we still talking about trying to hook up to the Sioux line and...
Kind of hook it up to the Sioux line.
And then having to come through that direction or...
Kind of like a U-shaped from this...
Yep.
South end of town. So we're actually having a meeting, um, the first week of July with the county and just kind of express what we're looking at as far as the trail and sidewalks and other possibilities with that reconstruction project. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, um, was the part-time help I've been getting. In prior years, we've been using a college or high school person, generally from June first to September first, kind of that summer, three months. Last spring, we had the availability of hiring a retired person and, uh, kept them on year round, one day a week in the winter time, two days a week in the summer. And I really like that setup. Just some of the different workload that's been put on mosquito spraying, community gardens, extra snoring mobile. It's been nice to have that extra help. Uh, currently we pay him nine dollars an hour and I would like to see that increase. I kind of see this going forward as having more of a...
Oh, Bob, is he reliable?
He is really. But even if it's not Fred Underhill, that's the person we hired.
Yeah, Fred's a good man.
And even if it's not Fred five years from now, I still think it's valuable to have a full-time, part-time person year round. I just see a lot of value in that.
The admin committee was kind of talking about a position or that position before you asked the guy here, Gina brought up a good point, is that, uh, you know, coming up here, Gina, when does that turn out?
In August. Minimum wage goes to nine dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, you guys would make him basically minimum wage, I know he does a lot of stuff and takes out a lot of equipment.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like that, so.
Basically, I'm operating the skid loader and the tractor, whatever needs to be done on the streets. As far as the class B equipment, the street sweeper and the snowplow, he doesn't operate any of that, buck a truck, no. I guess I'd propose a thirteen dollar an hour wage for that position going forward. I just think it's, yeah, a clear the responsibilities and the quality he's running with. That's up for discussion as well.
Yeah, I don't know how you guys feel about it. I guess that Fred's a, Fred's a pretty good man, uh, probably does a good job, I think. You know, I know I got a straight of motor for most of the while when I come into town, but other than that, he's...
And Todd says you gotta look at it not as that person that's gonna be whoever. One day Fred's gonna decide he's gonna retire or retire and, uh, gonna have to find somebody else. So you have to look at what is that position, not that person, but what is that position worth? And is that position worth that minimum wage or is that position worth something more where it's somebody who's gonna be responsible that you don't have to babysit? That can operate the equipment more than a high school kid can.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Steph. And I think too, you have to look at too is, uh, you know, what's maybe entry level versus, you know, somebody who is a little more capable into it and, and, uh, yeah, you have to look at the position that I, I, I do think that Fred's doing a good job for what I see now.
Well, we...
You're on the, you're on the public works committee.
And we started him at an entry level and he was well above entry level to start with. I mean, the reality of that part, um, I don't have a problem with everything that he's been doing for us. If you ever driven by his yard, boy, if there was anything wrong with it, it's fixed within five minutes. I mean, he, and he did that with our equipment. I mean, put him on anything and it comes back better than it left. It's almost like he shampoos it before it brings it back. I mean, he's phenomenal with our equipment. You know, that's gonna make all of our equipment last that much longer, you know, compared to you throw somebody on there and he's running a lawnmower and runs into four trees and seventeen rocks and you replace the lane. But it's not like that.
Right.
So, meanwhile, he's, uh, upping him to thirteen dollars an hour.
Meanwhile, he's, uh, upping them to thirteen dollars an hour. I don't know if we want to do anything tonight or not, but I don't have a problem with it because it's.
Is that something you want us to look at for tonight, Bob, or is that something?
If you want to think about it, just put some numbers together.
Well, I guess we talked about that, the workshop already, and that, I guess we had agreed, so I don't know. I don't remember.
I don't think anybody had a problem with that workshop, so. At least nobody spoke up and said anything.
Just from the hours that I figured, it would be, uh, two thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollar difference per year, twenty-seven forty-four difference per year.
And when you, uh, we're just kind of looking at your budget a little bit before the meeting tonight, too, and, uh. Yeah, I, I don't know what you guys, apparently, you guys think that, so.
I know, I'm going to make a motion. I think, I'm going to make, go ahead and make a motion that we increase the public works part-time help position to a thirteen dollar an hour position.
Okay, motion on the floor from Steph.
I'll second that.
And second by Don, you all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. That all you got, Bobble?
All I have.
Okay, thanks, Bobby.
Not retroactive.
No.
That's why I said not.
Oh.
She, Scotty, what do you got going?
I don't really have anything. Um, just a, make, just to bring up something, although, Bob, I think it's important that he has someone that he can trust and has value to a position. Just with the actual workload that I see him doing too, so I think it's important that, that he keep Fred and, you know, keep him as an asset to the city, so. But I, myself, I don't have anything. I think he's pretty much up in.
Anybody else have any? Thanks for the use of your computer, Steph.
I'd need yours here.
Yeah, I'm going to have to do that. Well, if nobody else has anything, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion on the floor by Gina?
Second.
Second by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.
No, it's time to say no and stamp out disease, I'm.
Steph, thanks for, uh, taking the time today. I know you, uh, are very busy, so I appreciate it.
That's what I say that for, see you guys. Those shrimp are coming.
Um, so I drove by it and the doors are all shut, but there's cars parked out front, so I'm working on.
I've driven by a couple times the building those times.